Then, since we're all here, if I may call this meeting to order. And if you'd all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if I could ask us to all stay standing for a moment of silence. Selectman McCarthy, he lost his grandmother earlier this week. First order of business, to consider and act upon the minutes of regular meeting of January 2nd, 2013, may I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion or changes?
No.
Okay. You ready to vote?
Yeah.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Minutes are passed. We have a couple of resignations. Ms. Pamela Jones from the Fair TV Operational Committee and Ms. Anita Rappaport from the Water Pollution Control Authority. I want to thank both for their volunteer spirit and their work on behalf of the town. May I have a motion to approve the appointment to the Water Pollution Control Authority of Mark Accorin, Democrat from 1213 Fairfield Woods Road, to replace Frank Chaplinsky, who resigned earlier.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion?
I would just love to say I'm grateful to Mark for his service, and I think he's going to get to work right away as there's a meeting tonight, so.
Yes, Mark, let me add to that. I want to thank you for your spirit, your volunteering. And again, as we said before, this is really what makes Fairfield tick, is the volunteers, the spirit, the enthusiasm that folks bring in. We couldn't run this town without the volunteers that so generously give of their time. And Mark, thank you very much for volunteering that stead and helping the town out and providing that leadership. Any further discussion? Any comments from the floor? All right. Seeing none, back to the board. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, Mark. And because, as I understand the schedule, and talk about jumping in to get started, there's a meeting at 7:30 tonight that somebody would like you to be ready for. So if you wouldn't mind coming up, Mark?
Oh, good idea.
Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully discharge, according to the law, your duties as a member of the WPCA for the town of Fairfield, to the best of your abilities, so help you God?
I do.
Congratulations. Your official. Oh, you want these? Excuse me. Selectman Kylie?
Yes?
Do you want us to wait for you to return, or can we take the next item?
Go ahead, stop, please.
All right. The next item up is a request for the use of the town green. To here, consider and act upon a request from the Center for Women and Families for the use of Town Hall Green for their first annual Walk a Mile in Her Shoes event Saturday, April 27th, 2013, from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. They have a motion to accept.
So moved.
And I'll second that. Any discussion?
I...
Do I want to ask the chief to maybe fill us in a little bit? Chief, could you fill us in a little bit? I know you're one of the key instigators of this event.
Probably be the best in Florida. Depending upon how successful it is, you can list me as an instigator or not. Pretty self-explanatory. April 27th is part of the White Ribbon Campaign. For those of you who are not familiar with it, the Center for Women and Families is the organization that assists not only the Fairfield Police Department, but police departments in the region in dealing with sexual assault and domestic violence cases. We could not do what we do without their help, and they likewise. We've teamed up with them to try and get men more involved in the awareness of domestic violence. That program is headed under the White Ribbon Campaign, for which you, Mr. Tetra, are a member. I am currently chairing that committee, and in an effort to get more awareness, we are asking as many men as possible to sign up through the center's website to become a member of the White Ribbon Campaign. The website is www.cwfefc.org. So if you, men and women, can certainly sign up and participate. April 27th, the first step was to find a location to start and end at. We're hoping the green is the spot to do that. And then our plan is to walk a mile, hopefully through the center of town. Chamber of Commerce is interested in getting involved in it, so we look like it'll be a good event to bring awareness to domestic violence. So we look for, the date's set, the place is set now, we've just got to have 1,000 men show up.
You've also taken the lead in getting men involved in this effort. You talked about that being part of the White Ribbon Campaign.
Yes, yes.
Can you talk a little bit about that? And can you also tell us what your goal is? Because I believe you've got a target for White Ribbon.
We do. White Ribbon Campaign is something that started out of Canada, and the general purpose of the White Ribbon Campaign is just that, men becoming more involved in the prevention of domestic violence. We know that the majority of offenders in domestic violence cases are men, so if we can get men and boys as role models and encourage them to sign up and support efforts to prevent domestic violence, that's really what the White Ribbon Campaign stands for. If you go to the website and sign up, we're looking to have 1,000 men signed up in the region by the walk. We currently have over four, I just checked the website, we have over 400 now. The push is really on to get it higher. Women can also sign up, we don't discriminate, 1,000 men or women to support the White Ribbon Campaign. Very simple. You sign up, you get a white ribbon as a symbol that you will take efforts to prevent domestic violence and participate in the walk. And once that's done, then we're going to take this collective energy of these 1,000 White Ribbon members to do some pretty neat things, I think, in the future. So, thank you for supporting this, and thank you for anyone who signs up and becomes part of that 1,000-person campaign. Thank you.
Any questions from the board? Kristen?
Question. Walk a mile in her shoes.
Mm-hmm.
So we get to see a variety of shoes at the walk?
Yeah, yeah.
I've seen pictures from some other walks, so.
Yeah, I think...
Women's shoes. I think everyone should have that experience.
Well, yeah. Women wear a variety of shoes, so I will select the most comfortable shoes I can find. But it's more symbolic, and really, we understand it. You know, it's meant to show that the, really, put yourself in the position of a woman, or a woman who is, women are mostly affected by domestic violence, although there are men victims. So it symbolizes to put yourself in the position of a woman who may be victimized and not know where to go, not know where to get the help. And men and boys, we've gotten more at high school groups supporting it, can really make a difference. So it's symbolic, and at the same time, it should be quite an interesting event. So I will wear something to protect the ankle, so I don't hurt myself. But I look forward to a real good event, so.
Well, in all seriousness, I am extremely grateful for your leadership. We're very fortunate to have the Center for Women and Families, and I think this is, it's a wonderful way to raise awareness and certainly in the wake of what's happened in Newtown, too. It's in that entire effort to work towards nonviolence, I think.
Violence is violence, and anything we can do to prevent violence goes a long way across the board, I agree.
So thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Any further comments from the board?
Just quickly, you know, thank you to you and your entire board for all that you do here and the efforts that you make, and I look forward to walking with you and supporting you and continuing to watch your organization grow and, you know, reduce the violence in our communities. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any comments from the public? Seeing none, back to the board. I want to echo my colleagues' remarks, and Chief, thank you for your leadership in this very important cause, and I think it goes a long way with the example you set and the leadership you set to helping our community take the important steps against domestic violence in this. So thank you for that. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Chief, you have your finish line.
Thank you.
Excellent. All right. Next up is the Burr Gardens Advisory Committee, to hear an update on the Burr Homestead Foundation Plannings renovation.
Hi.
You might.
Good afternoon. I don't know if you, we've met before, but I'm Laura Fisano.
Thank you.
The newly-elected chairman of the Burr Garden Advisory Committee. And I'm happy to be here to update you today on our plans to renovate or revitalize the Burr Mansion Foundation plantings. You may have gotten some handouts, but I just thought I'd prepare this for you. The green is, hmm, where's the other part? Anyway, sorry about that. But that is the, the green areas are going to be planted or existing that will remain on the property. And again, I'm just talking about areas, enclosed proximity to the building. And I also have some before and hopefully after pictures. Actually, the after picture is from 1912. We're trying to bring back a little bit of park-like setting that originally was how the house was situated.
See, that looks, that looks really good.
Doesn't it look fabulous? This is the current look.
Mm-hmm.
And it's just been overgrown and overplanted. Isn't that lovely?
It really is nice.
You know, that does show the house with the original picket fence. There is now a high brick wall that was built in the '30s, but other than that, we were trying, we're trying to bring back that look.
See, just a comment, looking at that, it's both a lot more scenic.
It is.
You can actually see the landmark. The realtor in me likes this for two reasons. One is you can see the house.
It's true.
Right?
That's a bonus.
Not that we're going to take pictures and try and sell it, we're not listing Burr Mansions, but that you can actually see the house. And the second thing is, having been a victim of too many home inspections, I think, by getting the trees and trebery away from the house, it's healthier for the house, it cuts down on maintenance. Moisture is not a friend of wooden structures. So I think this helps in many respects and potentially should lower our maintenance costs a little more.
That's true. And I liken the importance of the Burr Mansion to Montechello. I'm just going to make that sweeping comparison, but here is an existing picture of how they have, you know, landscapes. And it's very simple, and that is appropriate for the vintage of the home. So I, we've gone through, Mike Jaylee has worked with our committee, Ellen Gold is here as part of my committee. Mike has helped from the Fairfield Museum aspect. Oliver's, Mercy's has been very involved. We've had another, Diane DeVores, a local prominent landscape architect, who has given her thumbs up. And of course, Ken Placco's been instrumental. And he's not here today, but we did file a permit with him. And I am just giving you that update and hoping that you are in favor of it.
Any questions from the board?
It looks great.
Just to clarify, you're talking about the plantings, but not the wall itself, I think?
The wall itself, no. We are not touching the wall.
Right.
No, no, no. I'm just talking about greenery, yes. So we were hoping to start this and complete it soon, so that the museum can rent it, you know, use, it'll be available for the wedding rental season, and it'll be in good shape, looking great. So that's it. We're going to try to transplant as much as we can. There's a few things that are just unsightly and not worth the labor to move, but other than that, we're excited about it. And I think it's going to really add some curb appeal. As a realtor, you know that, that's exciting.
I just, from a standpoint of some of your, some of the guidelines of the committee in terms of what you're trying to operate by, do I understand correctly that you're trying to restore much of the plantings in the whole Burr Gardens area back to the shrubs and plantings that were there or here, I guess I should say, during colonial times?
You know, that would be, that would be, that would be wonderful. It's really hard to do that because we don't have a good record of what was there. What's typical, yes, we can go by that. Victorian times, they were, they were exploring the Mideast and Asia. So there's a lot of exotics that were brought over in Victorian times. So we have some of that on the property. Anything that's mature and wonderful, we're not going to touch. You know, there's, there's some things there that may not have been colonial or native, but they're, they're appropriate for this property. But yes, we are trying to go phase by phase on the property and restore it and make it shine for the town and the community. So, yes, and this is phase one.
Okay. It's not really voting on it, but I want to thank you for the update, and at least personally, I'm thrilled with what you're doing, and I love the way it's going to look.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, and good luck to your committee.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, the Fairfield Historical Society. To here, consider and act upon a request to approve rental rates for Burr Mansion. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All right. Mr. Jaylee, do you have a bit of a presentation or review for us, or do you want to step us through this?
Sure. I can just give you a little background. As the selectmen probably know, the town has a management agreement, I'm sorry, I'm Mike Jaylee, Fairfield Museum. The town has a management agreement with the Fairfield Museum to oversee the use and appropriate community use of Burr Mansion. As part of that, we do for special events, weddings, Christmas tree festival, everything that goes on at the Burr. There are very modest rental rates charged that largely go to cover costs, cleaning, maintaining the property, what have you. It has been our joint mandate and mission to make whatever rental fees are charged there to be as inexpensive as possible to encourage the broadest use. We have, and rental rates have not changed, to my knowledge, since 2006, if not before. We have asked an adjustment on just two of those rates for the weekly nonprofit rate. That mostly affects the big events that go on there, Christmas tree festival, Santa's house, what have you. What we're finding is, as those events have grown considerably over the last couple of years, just the cleanup costs and the maintenance costs after them are not being covered, and so, you know, the property is actually losing money on those things. So we've just asked for a very modest adjustment of $200 for each of those, and that's it. Everything else will stay the same.
All right. Thank you. Any questions from the board? No. Just, it seems, at least to me, more than reasonable in terms of what adjustments you're making, and I think it's important, and again, I compliment you for taking time to look at this, both in terms of providing the fees to do the cleanup and maintenance that that kind of use wears on a structure, the age of Burr Mansion. And just, I would ask you to continue to look at that and the ongoing maintenance cost to make sure that those are the costs that are being covered for that, for lack of a better term, the excess wear and tear that perhaps it takes because of that.
Absolutely. Well, we enjoy a very good collaboration with the town to make sure all the historic properties are maintained as well as possible, so.
And certainly haven't been the several functions there in the past year or so. It is in great shape, and I think continues to be a great venue for functions and organizations like that. All right. Any comments from the public? Seeing none, back to the board. Any comments before we vote? Are we ready?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you again, Mike. All right. Next up, to here, consider and act upon the following resolution concerning town nonrecurring capital. A resolve that the Board of Selectmen rescinds in its entirety, the resolution approved by the Board of Selectmen at its meeting on January 2nd, 2013, entitled a resolution appropriating $837,000 for the costs of certain nonrecurring capital projects and authorizing the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation. I'm going to read all three of these, and then, is Mr. Mayor here?
No.
I don't see it.
No, we're going to need him back here in a minute. Okay. In fact... Jen?
I think she already...
Good. Already. Talk about thinking ahead. Jen, thank you. Item B, to here, consider and act upon a resolution appropriating $1,162,000 for the cost of certain nonrecurring capital projects and authorizing the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation. And C, to here, consider and act upon a resolution amending and restating a resolution. Let's come back to that one, because I think that's a totally separate issue in this regard.
Yeah.
So those are the first two. And before I ask for a motion to accept, let me summarize what I think is happening here. We motion, we passed the nonrecurring in our first meeting in January. We withheld approval on three of the items in that list of items. Two of those items are going to come back before us right now. In essence, we're going to catch up with that. So the thought would be, rather than having two separate resolutions go to the Board of Finance, that we have one resolution go to the Board of Finance. So we enact, we rescind our first motion from January 2nd, and we pass a second motion, including what we passed on January 2nd with the potentially two different items that we're approving today to add to that. And that would be the higher total number here. So then, what would go to the Board of Finance at their meeting in February would be what we passed in the first meeting plus whatever we pass here today.
Got it.
So it makes it easier in terms of tracking it, going all the way through, there's one resolution. So if a year from now, we're looking back on resolutions, we're not trying to see, was it in the first resolution, the second resolution, passed at the first meeting, at the second meeting? There's one resolution passed at one meeting. It shouldn't impact the Board of Finance process, because they will still be taking up one resolution on their February agenda. They may have to not take action on the one they postponed, perhaps, because this will be a consolidated effort. Does that, realize that's a little convoluted, but...
It makes sense.
All right. So it's one part, what I'm going to call a real motion, because there are two projects we need to consider and decide if we're going to vote on them, and it's one part administrative in that we're combining the resolution into one resolution.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Bob's on his way down.
Okay. Good. And then, Mr. Mayor will be down here shortly to step us through part of that. But perhaps, Joe, you could start, in the meantime, in stepping us through the two additional parts of the project.
Sure.
And if you'll just officially introduce yourself.
Sure. Joseph Michael Lanzo, Director of Public Works. At the previous Board of Selectment meeting, there was an item for the Fairfield Woods roof for $200,000 to replace the existing EPDM, which is a rubber-type roof. And there were some questions on the last meeting regarding the validity of construction estimate. Both myself, Ed McCourt, Jim Girardi, in my office, did some more exploration. We actually went up to the site below and above, consulted with Board of Ed, staff, and their consultant, because they do a lot more roofing than we did. We got more firmer prices on the, on the estimate, detailed every, every item, so we're confident that we could replace it, the roof part, within the $200,000 limit that we requested. There was also some questions about the, the future of the building, and once again, I touched base with the, with the facilities committee. They have not had a chance to formally act on this, but via email, I canvassed all the members, and the consensus was, and once again, nobody was opposed to replacing the roof. So the roof is leaking as it is, numerous spots damaging the stacks, carpeting. So, you know, the $200,000 will be spent on top, so anything that's done below the surface, below the ceiling level, will not be wasted.
Thank you. And then, do we have any questions? I guess let's start one at a time. Any questions on that?
And there's library staff here, if you need them.
Just a couple. Do you want to go first?
No, go ahead.
Joe, thanks for coming back with this information, and it's comforting to know that, you know, the additional work you did on the bids has given you comfort that the $200,000 is enough. So that's, that's good work. Thank you for that. And as we discussed last time, I mean, the roof's leak, it's got to be fixed. So that's, that's good news, or it's good news that we're addressing it, is what I should say. And it must be done, and everyone else is on board with continuing the work and getting the work done. And I think the last point, I'm kind of paraphrasing a bit, is that by spending this money, unless there was something dramatically different about the next building or a revised building that built up or did something that we're not expecting, at least today, the work would not be redundant or rendered useless down the road.
Correct. We expect this to last its full 30-year life, regardless of what's done in the interior.
Right. You've answered all the questions that I know I had last meeting, so I'm certainly, I'm grateful for that and comfortable with what we're looking at.
Go ahead.
And I also would like to thank you for coming back with this, and appreciate the certainty with which you bring this forward. So that is helpful in terms of looking at financing and funding this. My, the other part of my question actually was, I know, I think the folks from the library had a conflict last time, and having had some conversation with them, I think that, I agree, not I think, I do agree that we have to replace the roof, and we need to do something to protect the resources that are there and the people who are using the building as well. What, what I may differ slightly with is in perspective, I think, right now, we have an immediate problem that we have to address now, for whatever reason, whether it's, we didn't address in the past, or certain events have occurred that have resulted in this, but that it's, it remains to be seen what happens with that facility. Last meeting, we spoke about this, and you expressed that hesitation, and, which is, was part of also why I was interested in...
Learning more.
Learning more, and pausing on that vote, because it is a significant sum of money, and we do need to spend it now, but I think it's an uncomfortable, yet necessary vote, because I do think that, well, we will continue to explore in the coming years, and when that is exactly, I don't know, but what needs to happen at Fairfield Woods. And while the roof may last for 30 years, we're not exactly sure yet what shape, literally, that building will be.
Exactly.
So I just, you know, I enter into this vote knowing that that's the case, but knowing that we need to address it now. So I thank you for coming, and I thank the library folks as well for the conversations I was able to have with you.
Just a quick follow-on, Joe. Assuming this goes through the, the next couple of bodies quickly, how quickly can you guys get out there and, you know, start the work and stop the leaking?
That's a good question. We do a formal design and bid for this. So that process, you know, once we get the final approval and the money's ours to spend, I'd say probably about a three-month process before, you know, they're ripping and replacing.
Okay. So hopefully in, hopefully before the rainy spring season, if we get lucky.
Correct. And one of the things we want to beat the season is, you know, the, you know, just like our schools, all schools, you know, most roofs are done because of schools between, you know, June 20th and September 1st. We want to beat the school rush.
Good. Thank you for that.
Thank you. And again, Joe, just to clarify where we are, we have, I'm going to say for, for quite a few years now, and I don't know quite how far back to go, this roof kind of reached the end of its useful life a while back. We have been patching this pretty much every year as leaks have come up.
Yeah.
And really, what we're saying is, is there really isn't a less expensive solution at this point. We've patched every which way we can patch, and it still seems to leak. I'm going to say on a regular basis, but certainly whenever it rains, so that...
Of course, no.
Yes. So this becomes the least-cost way to address that and, you know, save the facility inside, because water getting inside this facility is not helping maintain it, certainly. So this is really something, perhaps it should have been done a few years back, but, but at this point, definitely needs to be done in order to preserve the structure and keep it as well-maintained as we can. Is that correct?
Correct. And, you know, being up on the building, I have pictures on the, on the cell phone, and it looks like a, you know, like a, like a series of inner-tube patchings on the, on the roof.
So we patch to the point we can. There are some long-term questions in terms of what we do with the Fairfield Woods Branch Library. There's a very significant fossil that we had a report on last spring at this board that was probably a bit more than the town can stomach on a bonding or debt service issue at this point. So as much as we're not sure that we're, you know, this is certainly not a commitment to spend 30 years without doing anything more up there. And so the board is clear, we have asked, or I have asked, the Town Facilities Commission to take a look at that branch library, identify what we need to do in the short term in terms of any maintenance projects to address everything we can. It was a rather extensive list of improvements that came from the Library Board of Trustees to this body last spring that addressed all the different things that need to be fixed. The maintenance option was not their first preference, but since we can't necessarily finance the first preference, at this point, we need to at least do this, in my mind. So this is step one. I would expect the Town Facilities Commission or DPW to come back to us with some other maintenance projects at some point. So those will come back before this board and we'll make sure that everybody understands that. But I just wanted to put this in perspective to address the unspoken question that, no, this is not our 30-year fix.
Right.
But it does keep us in more reasonable projects. Any further questions on this? Any comments from the public on this? Okay, back to this board.
Thank you. And just as that process goes forward, I assume that the Facilities Commission and the Library Board of Trustees will remain in communication and through your office so that the knowledge and experience that that group has in terms of what they've looked at can be combined with the experience at the TFC level. And I hope that that will continue. And I know that it has been started, so...
That's the process that we've followed up until now. DPW has primary responsibility for maintenance of the building. They do that in conjunction with the library staff so that the, and in this case, the extra step we've added is ask the TFC to come in and take a look also, so we have the benefit of their expertise in looking at this.
Thank you.
This is kind of project one of the two we're going to look at. So let me, if it's okay with the board, we'll go on to the next project.
Sure. I believe that's a tennis center lights?
Yeah. Ms. Lombardo, could you officially introduce yourself and step us through what you have in mind?
Good afternoon. Jerry Lombardo, Director of Parks and Recreation. I apologize for not attending last month's meeting, but I asked, we are requesting $125,000 to replace the existing lighting, light fixtures down at the tennis center and add two new tennis poles and lights for the sixth court that will be built this spring. As you may recall, in the proposed renovation plan of building a new facility down there, there'll be a new court added. No lights were going to be included in that because the indoor tennis group does not use the outdoor lights. So as things move along, I was investigating lighting and the new lighting out there is what they call eco-green. It's much more energy-efficient. So I am, and we've been having lighting issues over the years down there, particularly this past summer, where I didn't have lights on two poles for a good portion of the summer due to wiring and fixture issues. The cost would be $125,000. We'd be going from 40 fixtures to 28. We'd be saving approximately, well, we'd save 50% of our energy cost, which approximately equates to about $2,500 to $3,000 a year in energy savings. And we have about 290 paid members and a lot of other individuals that just come down and play. The facility is well-used. So I just hope you would entertain fixing the facility. The lights themselves are 24, 25 years of age.
If I could just clarify, we're basically expanding the lighting from five courts to six courts?
Correct.
Will there be any revenue impact because of that?
I'm hoping that there will be, because we'll get more members. Also, it will give us an opportunity to take the one court and sort of have like lessons on it and still keep the five courts for public, so I would generate revenue from that. That is one of my long-range plans in trying to generate more revenue down there. Revenue-wise, throughout the year, counting summer and winter, we bring in between the two facilities about, on average, $130,000 a year. That's net.
With respect to the lighting itself, you're replacing all the fixtures?
We would replace, there's six poles presently with 40 fixtures. We'd be replacing those 40 and adding eight more, so it would be a total of 28 fixtures instead of the 40.
When adding these new lights, is there any impact on the surrounding neighborhood?
Yes, the, thank you, the glare fixture and the spillage is a lot less. There's none over the streets. It's, the lights today, and particularly this fixture that we're looking at, and all athletic fixtures are designed now to, you know, be directed and shine on the courts. As you know, with a floodlight, when you shine it, it spreads. And with the shields and all the technology today, it directs it all on the court itself, the playing surface. So it's a lot less spillage. One area that I do have, and what, this has been brought to our attention about seven, eight years ago. We have so much spillage, it actually shines on one of the homes up on the Sasko Hill. I've been in the gentleman's yard and you can actually, you know, have, see the shadows on the wall of this house. So this will help reduce that. But that's the old lighting.
Any questions in the board? Kristin?
Thank you for being here. And to the questions, I think the energy grant process, and this may be for Mr. Michelangelo as well.
No, I'm glad you brought that up. I meant, this, it may be, we are investigating with our energy consultant, and I spoke to him as late as last week, and he believes that will be, that you, I will entertain this as part of the energy savings program. So we are looking for some reimbursement from them once we get the plan and know what we're going to definitely go with. So although we're asking for 100, and we'd have to have the money upfront, but we do expect some grant funding coming in. I can't say definitely yet because it hasn't been approved, but all indications is that there'll be some reimbursement from a grant.
But you intend and are in the process of actively pursuing that grant funding?
Oh, yes. I've been working with Ed Bowman and the consultant, and I spoke to the consultant just the other day.
Okay. Which is great. That's wonderful.
Yes.
My second question, which I had addressed you since the meeting, was regarding the revolving fund. And that, I think, came up whether here or in other places. And just to clarify, that this amount of size of the request would not work in terms of use of revolving funds?
Correct.
And if you could just address that and summarize that?
We used to take, our revolving fund is our trust fund for the Recreation Department that all the program fees come into. It's a self-supporting, all our programs are self-supporting. We used to at one time have accumulation of money. And big projects, yes, that came along, the commission would authorize the expenditure through the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance to expend those funds. Down the road, we end up giving, rather than doing it that, we end up giving the town, we budget approximately $75,000 a year out of that in budget time to go to the general fund. Anything over $200,000 at the end of our fiscal year, which is really September 30th, I believe it is, because we have a crossover in programming, anything over $200,000, we return to the town. This fiscal year, we were $215,000. So we have sent, we have journal entry, $15,000 into the general fund. So in essence, we'll be giving $95,000 or $90,000 into the general fund this year through that revolving account. We take on smaller projects now, 25, you know, basically up to like $50,000 if we can handle it. But we're right there at the threshold of not being able to sustain bigger programs, bigger projects. So we tend to keep it around the $25,000 mark to offset any general fund monies for projects.
Any other questions in the board?
Just quickly. Hi, Jerry.
How's it going?
On the fund, you typically do a report or a presentation to the Board of Finance or Board of Selectmen annually on the fund?
Yes.
In the October timeframe?
We didn't do it this year.
That's my question.
We didn't do it this year, but we will be doing it. I'm sure they'll be asking me. They haven't called me, but I'm sure at one of their quarterly meetings, they'll be asking me. Matter of fact, Mr. Flynn, chairman, asked me, probably said it'd be coming up at my budget hearing, probably mentioned at that time. He mentioned something about the revolving account.
I thought there was an agreement that on an annual basis, the report would be given without it being requested. So like every October, there was a report?
Oh, I don't recall that kind of...
No?
No.
No?
I know that the funding goes in usually every October.
That's when the adjustment gets made.
Right.
But, so when you reach the end of your year, which is September 30th, I believe, and there's a balance either below or in excess of $200,000, that's when you make the adjustment back to the general fund? I thought right after that, that there was some type of report or presentation that was delivered, just to summarize the year and those activities and that transaction.
I haven't done that, no.
Okay.
Mr. Kylie, would you like to just make an informal request, maybe by 11:30 of each year, that we hear back from Parks and Rec?
I think that's a great idea. That way we can have, that way that gives us an understanding, not just of the accounting and the cash flows, but also an understanding of the group of projects, those 10, 20, $50,000 projects that you're referring to, so we can kind of just, you know, be updated on what you guys are spending the money on.
Not a problem.
Good.
And Jen, would you please note that in a minute also, just so we have a record of that?
And to dovetail on that, you mentioned our upcoming budget hearings, and that seems like a great place where we'll all be together. I would welcome hearing about it there.
I would do so.
I'll add that to the informal request.
Can I ask one sidebar? On the tennis courts themselves, since you are building the new, the sixth court down there, can you just briefly explain what the current construction process, or what the current material is that's used for courts? And the reason I ask is that, I'm not sure, how long ago did we do or resurface the Fairfield Woods courts? It wasn't that long ago, was it?
Um, about five years now, I think.
Because I play over there and they're already pretty significantly cracked. So I don't know whether that's just Mother Nature or if that material is better or worse than what we've used in the past, or it just, it just doesn't seem to make sense that they would be cracked so quickly. So I don't know what's going on there.
No. It's asphalt.
It's asphalt.
That's all it is. And it is as when I got the appropriations. Matter of fact, this year, this spring, the four courts up there will be, you know, the cracks will be filled and painted. And the Board of Finance, and Kevin, I think you were instrumental in doing it, is that because we spent such a large sum of money of fixing all our tennis courts...
That one time, yeah.
Okay. That we put money in my budget so that I could go back and do the courts. And it's just about every five years that we would fill the cracks and replace them. There is a system out there that is a cement-based thing, and they guarantee X amount of years, but it is much more expensive.
Than asphalt.
Than the, and asphalt is very expensive, as you know, to do. I mean, it is being fairly inexpensive. And we got in, doing courts today, okay, compared to when we did it, the cost has gone up significantly. But there is a cement-based, but it's, it's very expensive and I don't think we would entertain it.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So five years is not an unrealistic or...
No, some of them...
Ninth of time?
No. Matter of fact, because it's, you know, because it is asphalt, because of the moisture and the frost and the, that's what causes it.
The heaving of it.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Further questions?
No.
Thanks for an interesting game, I'm sure.
Especially with my son, yes.
So unfortunate.
I was going to say that you may be losing a few miles an hour on your server, but I don't think it's because of the asphalt. Any comments from the public? All right. Coming back to this, Mr. Mayor, if I could ask you to come up and step us through how this bond resolution works? Thank you, Mr. Lombardo. And to the board, what I'd suggest is let's listen to Mr. Mayor's explanation of what we're doing, then lead a motion to accept what's taken place here, and perhaps we can do both of these at once at that point, if it's still the desire of this board to move forward on that one.
Thank you.
Bob Mears, CFO. Earlier this month, First Selectmen passed a nonrecurring capital resolution, I think it was 837, excuse me, $837,000. That resolution has not gone before or been passed by any other body. And when you, that resolution was passed, there were two items that were on the original resolution that were taken off, the two you just heard. There were three taken off, two you just heard, plus the phone consultant, which is not ready to be brought before this body at this time. So we had two choices. Choice one was to pass a second nonrecurring capital, which is these two items. And then we'd have two nonrecurring capital items to go before the Board of Finance and two to go before the RTM. So in discussion with bond counsel, it seemed much more efficient and clean to have this body rescind the original one and then pass a new one with the, with all of the approved items. And that way, we only have one, our nonrecurring capital resolution going to each of the Board of Finance and to the RTM, and one short-term bond resolution.
Any questions from the board?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Are we ready to vote?
No.
No, I just, what I thought we'd do is kind of follow the agenda, have a motion for item A and then a motion for item B. So those would be two separate votes, if that's okay?
That's great.
Sure.
All right. Are we comfortable that our questions are answered?
Yes.
Yeah. And are we comfortable with the two additional items, as long as I am? Are you good with the lights and the library? I'm good.
All right.
Yeah.
Item A, to here, consider and act upon the following resolution resolved that the Board of Selectmen rescinds in its entirety the resolution approved by the Board of Selectmen at its meeting on January 2nd, 2013, entitled "A Resolution Appropriating $837,000 for the Cost of Certain Nonrecurring Capital Projects and Authorizing the Issuance of Bonds to Finance Such Appropriation." May I have a motion to accept?
Some of.
A second.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion on this item and this item only?
No.
Any comments from the public? All right. Back to the board. Are we ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Now moving on to item B. To here consider and act upon a resolution appropriating $1,162,000 for the cost of certain nonrecurring capital projects and authorizing the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation. And there is a bond resolution covering that in your packet. May I have a motion to accept?
Some of.
A second.
Second.
And just to be clear, this concerns, considers every project that was originally presented to this board on January 2, with the exception of the IT consultant for the new phone system. All right. Any questions or comments from the board?
No.
Any comments from the public? Coming back to the board. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Joe, thank you. Jerry, thank you. Bob, thank you for your explanation.
Thank you.
And thank you to the library folks.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is item C. To here consider and act upon a resolution amending and restating the resolution adopted March 26, 2012 by the representative town meeting, and prior to that, this board. May I have a motion to accept?
Some of.
A second.
Second.
All right. Mr. Mayor, would you step us through this? Or is it, Mr. Mike Angel, who's going to step us through?
I can talk about the resolution if you'd like.
Joe, why don't you take us through the project first, and then, Bob, if you pick up with the resolution?
As Mr. Tetra said last year, there was a capital appropriation to replace the existing fuel tanks at the Public Works garage. There is a underground diesel tank and underground gasoline tank that feeds, that fuels the Public Works vehicles. The tanks that were in the ground there were past their legal useful life, which is 30 years. We were under, I would say, some moderate pressure from DEEP to replace them. So a capital project was approved for $218,500, and the pieces of that was approximately $20,000 for an environmental consultant, $163,000 for the tanks and dispensing system themselves, and $30,000 for remediation. And once again, the remediation was based on what was known at that time. So the project was approved, and it, I guess the origin of the problem, in the summer of 2012, August, there was the additional environmental exploration, which was planned on this project, was started. And what it found was that there was more contaminants than were believed there. So a second round of environmental testing was also done in October. And just to characterize the spill that's there, what we know now, after those two rounds of testing, is that the contaminants in the ground at the Public Works tank are not believed to come from this generation of tank. So they predate these two tanks in the ground. These two tanks aren't believed to have leaked. So the contaminants there, which are approximately 300 feet around the existing tanks, are from the previous 30-year tanks that were in the ground over there. And because there are two tanks, it's not exactly, even though it's 300 feet, it's not exactly a radius, because you have basically two center points. So the environmental testing has sort of changed the scope of the remediation, but the immediate problem is not, or concern, is that in our estimate from last year, our proposed budget for that was $163,000. The actual bid prices came in $40,000 in excess of that, which is 203,000 it came up. So now we're faced with, we have to replace these tanks. They're well beyond their statutory life. There's considerable fines from DEEP if they are not replaced, which may well exceed the cost of this. So that's the immediate need, to get these tanks out of the ground and replace them with two above-ground tanks of fuel dispensing system. So these will be state-of-the-art tanks that simply cost more than was anticipated. The second part of the problem is that the proposed remediation, which was $30,000, won't be as simple. It'll be most likely a five-to-10-year endeavor, which is, our consultant has projected it to cost approximately $118,000 to $196,000. And I could talk about what is envisioned for the remediation, but the immediate need now is to fund the actual tanks, the remediation, because it is going to be a five-to-10-year endeavor, whether it's funded in a lump sum now, or is deferred to an operating expense as we go forward, is two ways to handle the situation.
Go right ahead.
The five-to-10-year endeavor point, can you just give a little bit more information about that?
Yep. Well, the, the way that groundwater, well, the way that contaminants are handled historically is either remove everything, you know, every bit of soil from the site, which is one way to do it. Our consultant doesn't feel that's necessary. What has been done, sort of state-of-the-art, as opposed to the remediation for years, is you pump groundwater out of the ground, you treat that groundwater to solve the problem, with the idea being when you're pulling the water out of the ground, it takes the contaminants with it, and you treat that. And that's sort of past technology. So the new state-of-the-art, so to speak, is to basically inject air into the ground and force the contaminants out via air. And once again, instead of the water taking the contaminants with it, the air takes the contaminants with it. You capture the air, you treat it in that effect. So, and once, so when you design this system, you're basically injecting air into our 300-foot radius. So we don't know if we'll need, you know, a half a dozen of these injection points, or two dozen of these injection points. And we don't know if we'll need a five-year period or 10-year period. So the number of injection points will be determined upon future testing. So it depends how, basically how porous or how compact the soil is, how many of those you need. And the time period will be basically for monitoring wells. So if we're on a five-year period and our monitoring wells come back where we're above that, the legal limits, and our material is clean, we don't have to do it for years six through 10. We're out of the remediation business. But that's why there is a variation in that price.
Go ahead.
We, we're definitely going with that, as opposed to the, the consultant has recommended that the wholesale removal of the soil, is it not cost-effective? Because clearly the timing of that would be more compact.
Well, the wholesale removal of the soil is, would be much more extensive, but because of the, you know, I'd say because of the age of the spill, that is why it's not, it's not necessary or recommended. But that would be the, you know, well, in excess of what we're talking about here.
Any further questions?
Did you say extensive or expensive?
Both.
Oh, both?
Yeah.
Okay. So moving the soil out is both of those?
Correct.
Even though it would be shorter in term, I would think it would be more expensive?
Yes, it would.
Okay. Thanks.
One more, just along the same line, but from an effectiveness standpoint, environmentally, this longer process is equally as effective and will achieve the same results and is as desirable as going that route?
That's what our, we have two consultants working on it. One's a geologist PhD, and the other is a, another environmental-type consultant. And that's the, you know, that's the course that they've recommended.
And just to be clear, whatever we do has to be approved. Our remediation action plan has to be approved by DEEP.
Correct.
Now, just one question, to be clear. DEEP, given where we are, given that we've identified there's a spill of sorts, we are required to take action on this? Is that instructions we've got from DEEP, or is there some regulation that defines that?
Well, there's, you know, there is a letter to the town of Fairfield from, I believe, June of last year. I'm not sure if that was in the packet. But yeah, there are state statutes that were cited in that letter. And once again, you know, they use some key phrases to get us to act on this. And, you know, they cited one regulation there. And I even believe there are more stringent regulations that, you know, that could, you know, put us in dire straits.
Just, if this is the, I believe, July 9 letter, just to quote a couple things, you know, it basically is referring to any active or temporary closed underground storage tank that is beyond their 30-year life expectancy. These UST systems must be removed from service immediately. And that was dated last July. Please be advised that the operation of USTs that are beyond their life expectancy is in violation of regulations of Connecticut State's agencies, goes on the list specifically, which requires that each UST be permanently removed from service prior to the end of its life expectancy. Any owner-operator that uses UST beyond its life expectancy is doing so in violation. Owners and operators of such USTs may be subject to enforcement actions, which could include civil penalties. So I think it kind of starts from that, and that was the generation, or the genesis, if you will, of this project and task.
And unfortunately, we are beyond our life.
Chris?
Along those lines, the fines that would commence, do you have a sense of the timeline as to when the fines, if we were to be fined, for example, under the statute?
Well, the way, I believe they could fine us immediately, because we are past the deadline. So whatever, you know, whatever our 30-year clock was, they could have started fining us, you know, on that date, which is, was several months ago.
But we are in the process of taking action and steps, I would hope that that would be mitigating for us.
Correct. They, you know, we've been in contact with them. They know our schedule. You know, they know some of the additional hurdles that we faced since, you know, that, you know, since, you know, August and October this year, it's gotten, gotten deeper and deeper. So, you know, we've, we're progressing on replacing them, but we hit a couple of obstacles.
Well, just to follow that up, I mean, they must be aware that we did look at this and understood how important it was almost a year ago, and we funded it before you ran into these obstacles. So we have made an effort, even though it's not quite done. Would that be fair to say?
Correct, and they understand.
Okay.
Any further questions from the board?
Just one last quick one. As far as, I mean, without getting into the weeds, you know, but as far as understanding the pumping the air into the ground as the remediation tool versus either moving the land out or using water to cleanse the soil, I guess was the other option. Are there any issues with that? Do, I mean, does pushing air into the ground force contaminants into the air above the ground, or it just, I just don't understand it?
Yeah. Well, you know, the injecting the air into the ground, the bubbles, that's actually called air spargeing. So you're pushing it in there, and you do have a formal soil vapor extraction unit, which is SVE. So there is, so there is a, you know, basically a void there that the, that you do, you know, so you're not forcing it into the air. You're capturing it and treating it.
Under the surface.
Correct, yeah.
So this is, I'm assuming this is an approved technique to do this?
Correct. It's state-of-the-art, and once again, they'd approve our remediation plan.
Okay. Thanks.
Any further comments?
Yeah.
Any comments from the public? All right. Back to the board. We're ready to vote?
Yes.
And we did move and seconded this, correct, Jen?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe, thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
Go right ahead.
I believe we just voted to increase the project, right, by adding the additional $220,000?
Yes.
And now we need to further go amend? Are we amending a resolution? That's the piece I wasn't clear on.
Just to be clear, in looking at the resolution?
From last year, right.
Amending and restating?
Right.
It restates up here, then amends, and then goes back and restates the bond resolution with a new number there, and that's incorporated into the resolution.
Okay, so that I understand. And so we just voted to both do the project and amend and restate the bonding resolution, is what we just did, which I'm fine with, but I did have a, I did have a question on the bonding resolution itself, if I, if I may just ask, Mr. Mayor?
All right. Mr. Mayor? Can you help us with?
So I'm perfectly fine with doing all this. I just didn't mechanically understand one thing, and I know I've got the cart in front of the horse a little bit.
Not actually. We actually have the horse in front of the cart.
Well, that's good news, right? See?
Which implies someone else did it.
Okay, that's correct. Unlike the previous item that we voted on, we rescinded, we rescinded a resolution that had not yet gone forward. In this particular case, we're just amending a previous bonding resolution. So I guess my question is, does that mean that that bonding resolution hasn't yet gone out? So it's still able to be amended before, like, is it still in the ban stage? Meaning it hasn't gone out, so it's still amendable?
Correct, yeah. This is a little bit different than what the town has done in the past. There's two ways to handle this type of situation. You can either take this, the difference in funds and add it to a new nonrecurring capital, or you can amend the original resolution. In the past, my recollection is, no, last year, there was one where basically you added a supplemental allocation to a new nonrecurring capital resolution. I think this is cleaner, because it allows the town bodies to track each individual project and the amount of each individual by resolution, rather than breaking up into pieces and possibly losing track of how much the total project ends up costing.
No, that makes perfect sense, for them to travel at the same pace. So that I understand as well. I just didn't know whether, if this bonding resolution had already, you know, gone to market, and therefore was not something that you could amend, if it was too late in that process.
No, we can amend it.
Okay.
Good. All right. And just to be clear, that was one of the points that you covered with Bond Council when structuring this new resolution, to make sure that it was appropriate.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Just a follow-up comment in terms of the town bodies being able to follow along. And I know in the past that we, and I say we, meaning I think the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, and RTM have talked about taking a look back at the projects that were funded, looking at what actually happened in terms of how much was spent on the project, and were they successfully completed, so that we come back and just touch base as we look back last year, here's what we funded, here's what happened, and, you know.
It creates a trail.
Right. So it's just, it's nice for us to be able to hear that. I think it's partly what I'm saying, is it might be nice to actually see, you know, we allocated this much, and it's an authorization to bond up to, but how much did we actually spend, end up spending on those ones?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
Thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Any comments from the public? Seeing none, back to the board.
We already voted, yes. I just had a follow-on question, and I thank you for that.
All right. Very good. All right. That's done. Next item up, then, is the Riverfield School Building Committee. And just to clarify for the board, what I'm going to suggest is we take no action on this. The, it's just a discussion item. The Riverfield School Building Committee is, in fact, meeting today to catch themselves up. They've had conversations with the Board of Education, and with the architect among themselves, and with the school administration, and Superintendent's office. So I'm going to suggest if we take no action on this, it will come back to us, since there isn't a motion to fund that project before. So it's got to come back for that. They're committed to come back to kind of update us on this. But that way, if they're not ready for our next meeting, it will be the meeting after that. But whenever they're ready, we can take this up. So if that, if my colleagues are comfortable that, if we just take no action, this just goes away, and we're not forced to keep putting it on our jets.
Sounds good.
All right?
Sounds great.
Next up, tax collector. May I have a motion to accept the refunds?
Some of.
A second? All right. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next up, continuation of discussion on the fire department staffing issue. We started this at our last meeting. We cut it off due to the lateness of the hour. And since then, a number of things kind of taken place, and let me just quickly review those. I believe everybody's aware of these, but to take them through one at a time. One, the issue came up and was identified as something that the Board of Selectmen needed to review and take a close look at. We asked for the fire chief to give us a report, which was started at our January 2 meeting. Second, the Board of Finance asked that they be updated as to where we stood. The fire chief was good enough to give them an update also. And then on top of that, the Fire Commission, which is charged with much of this oversight, also asked for an update and had this discussion at their recent meeting, and the Board of Selectmen, as ex-official members, were able to sit in on that. In addition, we, I've asked an independent counsel to come in and conduct a complete review of what's taken place. The Fire Commission has requested that all provisional appointments be stopped. The Fire Commission has requested that all provisional appointments be stopped until further notice. The Fire Commission and the chief have implemented a new promotion testing and there are several steps involved in that, but that should be done by approximately February 15th. And a new promotion list should be available, which would mean the seniority list that's currently being used would no longer be in effect. In addition, the independent counsel has been requested to report back to the Board of Selectmen based on their, his review of what's taking place. And there is an additional meeting at the Fire Commission on January 31st for some further conversation in terms of what the current situation is and what they're taking place. So, that's a lot of action that has taken place along these lines. With that, let me open this up and ask for your thoughts as to how the Board of Selectmen would like to proceed from here.
Sure. You want to start?
Go ahead.
Okay. The first thing I'd like to do is thank everyone involved for their participation and their cooperation and for providing information that's been requested of them. As Mr. Tetra laid out, a number of things have happened in the last three weeks and a couple days. And there's a lot more that will be happening in the next few weeks. We had the pleasure of getting a presentation by the chief on the second. We were able to attend the Board of Finance meeting the next week and the Fire Commission meeting the week after. So, you know, I think at this point, personally, I've listened and learned a lot, heard a lot, had a lot of questions answered for me and other people that helped me understand the situation better than I might have at the very first part of it. So, personally, at this point, I think I'm at a place where I think it makes sense to allow the attorney to begin that work so that when he reports back to the Board of Selectmen, you know, we can follow on the discussion at that point. So, I don't have any specific questions right now that have not already been addressed or answered. I mean, I have open questions, but I don't think they're answerable at this time. So, there's no need to go through that, I don't think. And I just look forward to the continued participation of all parties and the report that we're going to get from the independent counsel and having this board review that and their findings as soon as possible.
Yeah, I would echo Selectman Kylie's thoughts. I agree. I think it's important. We have had a lot of conversation and there are still a lot of questions. But I think at this point, it is wise to hear back from the independent counsel. I'm very glad that that will be coming before the entire board here and I'm grateful for that opportunity so that we can then continue the conversation and go from there in terms of what we learn. And I think throughout this process, my approach and my hope has been to learn and be educated, to essentially understand and to try and get all the facts on the table. And I think that by having someone who will be able to go through that process in an independent fashion will help us to do that. And then, we can then go from there. So, I appreciate the opportunity to address that in the future.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. I concur with you.
And just, I'm in agreement also, let's, just to clarify, the guidance I've asked for the independent counsel is to do his best to get it done within 30 days. I'm trying to walk that line between not requiring it be done in 30 days, but not wanting to drag this out either.
Right.
So, if it's not done in 30 days, I would expect the independent counsel to come before this board and give us an explanation on why not in terms of what wasn't able to be accomplished in that timeframe. If there are any questions or additional areas that you want to make sure get addressed by the independent counsel, I'd ask you if you could forward those along to myself or the town attorney and we'll make sure we get those on to the independent counsel.
Thank you for that.
All right. Any further discussion?
No.
All right. Thank you. And I should mention, Chief Feldner, thank you for showing up here today in case we had any additional follow-up questions there. Next up, to here, consider and act upon any communications. We don't have any at this point. Next item up, to here, consider and act upon any other business that shall properly come before this meeting. And I don't believe we have any at this point. With that being said, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.